We can go ahead and get started this morning. We are on a little bit of a timed schedule. And this is a long-anticipated staff meeting to talk about our legislative agenda. But there's three commissioners who have 10 o'clock appointments, so we need to be on the move. So commissioners, anything you have before we get started?
Nope. Just means you need to compromise sooner.
We did what?
Just need to agree sooner.
Yeah, there you go.
There's only four, it might be tight.
See, the election commissioner's not here because she's busy today. And I had a constituent call concerned about the improvement district out at Crest Fugee having an election today, and nobody knows about it. I guess it's her problem really, but I was going to talk to her about that. Well, I'll do it another time. Okay. Mr. Manager, you want to get us introduced here? I saw Mr. Watkins here.
I'll just let Eric take it. We met yesterday, and I'll let Eric and Will lead the discussion today.
The councilor's office has been involved in pulling together the legislative agenda and talking with the lobbyists. First, I want to introduce Jason Watkins. A lot of you know Jason already, but Jason and his partner Scott Snyder will be our lobbyists in Topeka. Stand up so everybody can see how you're looking. And he is the person that we will be in contact with. And our office, Will Dear, will be coordinating the legislative activities and has been pulling together your suggestions for our program. So with that, I will call on Will to kind of walk through that with you. And the commissioners decide what they want to do.
Okay.
We had a meeting yesterday with the manager, myself, Mr. Yoast, and we've come up with, we did this a little bit different than last year. We've got four key initiatives, and then we kind of had some secondary initiatives that have been brought by some departments. And, you know, it's all kind of open for discussion. On the key initiatives, I think most commissioners have been briefed on this, is the urban area designation. There's a provision in the Kansas Constitution where we can have Sedgwick County declared an urban area, which would allow us to pursue multiple different kinds of special legislation. This has been done in Johnson County and some of the other counties. Second key initiative is election commissioner. There's really two components to the election commissioner legislation. One is a post-election audit. And then number two, in certain other counties around the state, they're suggesting that perhaps the budget authority and the way the election commissioner is selected could be changed. And obviously, we could also leave the current framework in place. Number three is adequate support of mental health services. This is very important to comm care as well as to the sheriff and the county overall. We've kind of turned this into a three-prong approach. One is, you know, encouraging the state to define the role of our state mental health hospitals and develop a regional state-operated inpatient units and ensure we're adequately reimbursed for those inpatient units. The other is that KDADS should be provided support and sustained funding. This is for the crisis stabilization services. And then also support change to suspend rather than terminate Medicaid eligibility upon incarceration when folks end up in our jails. The fourth key initiative is economic development. And, you know, this is kind of a broader statement, simply that we support the creation and funding of state-level economic development tools, including a deal-closing fund adequate to recruit and retain high-paying jobs, and that Kansas needs to do this to compete with other states competing for jobs and recruiting our employers. And then we have really five other things that have been brought up. The treasurer had a couple items that I believe these were proposed last year as well on proposed cancellation of taxes when the amount is less than $10. And some changes to the personal property tax collection statute where we'd be able to recover some attorney fees. Corrections is proposing that we have the same bill we did last year, which would allow pre-trial detention of folks that violate pre-trial orders. So they're out on bond, they do something to violate that, we'd be able to bring them back in jail without waiting on a judge. Finance has proposed creating a city-county code fund. This creates some issues with our general fund, and Lindsey could probably explain this a little more if we want to discuss it, but the issue is the MABCD money can only be used for those purposes. So it kind of makes some headaches over there when we're dividing those funds up with finance. Aging asked that we introduce some legislation or just in general support the Senior Care Act program. And then the MABCD has asked that we have legislation to clarify the municipalities governing bodies can adopt their own electrical, mechanical, plumbing, and fuel gas codes without the need and for review and possible denial by the Kansas State Fire Marshal. And if anyone else has any other things that they would like to discuss, we can certainly add them to the list. But that's kind of our list we had come up with as of yesterday.
Commissioners, you got a comment?
You might be surprised, but I have a few questions about this number four, this slush fund. Where'd that come from? This is supposed to start with a word.
Now, this is something that I put on here based off of discussions that we've had at the partnership, and we can certainly take this off. But the city, along with the partnership, this kind of correlates to some mega projects. And certainly Tyson's kind of like one that is a mega project that we're working on right now, but there are several others that are potentially out there. So I know, and Jason may be able to help me on this. The partnership's been working with Jason, but I also know the city's going to put this on their legislative platform. So there's opportunity there if they're going to do that, for all three entities to speak as one. So I put it on there as a, you know, kind of a parking spot to give you guys a topic of discussion to see where you sit on it. We could certainly take it off if a majority of commissioners don't want it on there. But if the city and the partnership are going to go after it, and it's something that we need as a state, then maybe we need to at least socialize it and see if there's support amongst the commissioners to keep it on.
I think the proper way to spur economic development is to lower taxes and regulations for everybody, not to have a slush fund. So rather than put this in there, we need to put, we've had two of the largest tax increases in the recent years up there, one of which was retroactive for everybody to include people below $30,000. So I think stuff like this, we need to tell the legislature, stop raising damn taxes on everybody. Not raise them on everybody and then have a slush fund for someone who's politically connected so they can get some freebies. I won't support any legislative agenda that has this on there. And I don't think this meeting like this should be the first time I hear about something like this.
What tools are available? I mean, states involved in economic development, and they provide financial incentives and other things presently, so what do they have in their toolbox now?
You know, to be honest with you, Chairman Unruh, I do not know. I know when we were talking about the Tyson proposal, it seemed as though Nick Jordan and folks in the Brownback administration were heavily involved in that. What they offered, or what, I know there was discussion of even payroll tax abatement when the deal wasn't going to be in Leavenworth County.
H-Pip or something, and will they get 95% of their employees' taxes?
So Jason, do you know what those tools are for economic development they have currently?
Mr. Chairman, at the state level, it's primarily H-Pip and PEAK. There are some other abilities by the Department of Commerce to abate certain taxes, but H-Pip and PEAK are the primary tools. I think what the partnership was talking about, and I think the conversation that they had with the manager, was in relation to a very large employer in Sedgwick County going through an exercise, if you will, where they basically sent out requests for proposals to a number of different jurisdictions around the country if they were going to do a major expansion. And through the course of that exercise, it came back that Kansas really wasn't even on the map in terms of being able to compete for the project. And it's my understanding, this is a project that is not underway right now, but is a That's my understanding of how this item started to be talked about with the city, the county, and the partnership.
No, I stayed on.
Well, I'm not in favor of raising taxes either. I am in favor of economic development. I am in favor of the state taking a bigger part in it than leaving the full burden on local governments. I am in favor of supporting those initiatives with the city and the partnership, who we support financially. So I guess I'm okay with this being on here. Now, I would think that our legislature, which is clearly a conservative body of politicians, would approach this in such a way that it's reasonable. And I do think that Kansas is, we're losing ground with all these economic development prospects. I mean, the other states are getting investment and getting employment, and if this is a way that we can compete at the level that we can afford, then I'll be supportive of it. But I, you know, there's clearly no details here, but we've got it. Although I get really mad at the legislators a lot, we've got to trust them to do this. I guess, Richard, I'd be supportive.
You know, for me, and the reason why this is on here now, you haven't heard about it before, because we just heard about it a couple of days ago. You're not voting on this until the 29th, so you certainly have some time between now and the 29th to understand it better and for us to get more fidelity working with the partnership and Jason and the city on what that common message is going to be. But I didn't want to leave here today since the desire was for it to be on the legislative platforms of all the different partners, is I didn't want to leave here today without at least having the conversation. And this allows us to have that conversation, to know where you stand, and for us to get more fidelity here in the next couple of weeks of exactly what that is.
Is this the approximate language that would be in the legislative platforms of both partnership and the city?
The idea was to nest it. So it would be whatever we would put, the partnership would put, the city would put.
So we're the first ones defining this? Is that what you just said, or did you say the partnership come up with this language?
No. We, I came up with this language based off of our discussion last week with the partnership on, and also with a couple of the partners in the partnership. That was my understanding of what we're going for. So it's just general language, again, a parking space to get us talking about it. We'll define it here in the next couple of weeks. I insisted last week that we define what that language is so we can all be on the same sheet of music. But again, since we're having the discussion today on our platform, I didn't want to go without discussing this, so you're not surprised on the 28th before a vote on the 29th, so.
Is there any other comment? Comment on any particular item, commissioners?
I think we would need to get some specifics in the legislative language. I think, and why, I just support you name. I disagree with your characterization of the legislature being conservative. If you've had two of the largest tax increases in the history, then they're thinking about a third one. But this is how the game's played down here. Someone says, oh, my gosh, I might leave, and the elected leaders, you know, jump in the hoops, oh, my gosh, they might leave, wink, wink. Now, let's give them a bunch of goodies. Oh, good. And then, come election time, they get all these campaign contributions. That's how it works. Meanwhile, the people out, our constituents get hosed, so I'm not thinking. You know, it was a few years ago, the chamber did a survey. The top two things businesses said was lower taxes and fewer regulations. Well, when is the chamber, the partnership, going to fight for lower taxes and less regulations? That's what they need to be doing. This is the only thing they can do, then we need to reevaluate whether we're going to give them $3,000.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Last year's platform, we had what we called key initiatives, and we had policy positions. Just an observation, I guess, I'll speak about item four on page two there first, but that appears to me to be a policy position, not a key initiative. Here's the point, it's a broad, I think Mr. Dear even said it's a broad statement. If someone said, go write that bill, I have no idea what to write. I couldn't tell you. But if someone else presents a bill, I could tell you, based on that policy position, what our response would be based on someone else's legislation. But I couldn't write legislation based on what that we've written there. It's a policy position, it's not a key initiative. I, you know, if you want to put that on there, say we support that, that's maybe a good thing to do, but I couldn't write that legislation. Everything else on this entire list, I could go write that bill. That one, I can't. The only other exception I see on this entire list here is item three under the election commissioner. The bottom one says, leave the current framework as, leave the current framework in place. Well, that's not a legislative action. If we want to do that, there's nothing for us to do. If we want to support these other two, we ought to be talking about whether we support the proposed langu, or, there's been a number of ways to solve those problems that have been proposed. We ought to pick our, are the ones we would support.
And Commissioner Howell, I did reach out to the Kansas Association of Counties. Thus far, Shawnee and Johnson appear to be where the issue is being brought up, that there isn't a bill that's been introduced as of yet, so.
And I think, they do intend to, I think they're drafting a bill.
Correct.
And introducing that. So, you know, we might say, there's a number of things we would support, perhaps.
Right.
That are, you know, and we understand they're leaning on that. But I guess my point is, everything on this list, if I can't go write the language, if I don't understand what we're asking for, then I don't know that it's, I call it a key initiative. You know, post-election audit, last year's platform said very clearly exactly what post-election audit means and what we're asking for. I can write that bill, I can go to Topeka and advocate for that bill, it's easy. But you talk about something broad statement like we support, you know, economic development. Okay, yeah, we do, but what does that mean? What are you exactly asking for? Is there a tool we're aware of that some other state has? We need to hear, we want to go write that bill and introduce that language. If that's what we're talking about, then let's put that in here. But now, this broad statement is a policy position, it's not a key initiative.
Again, this is a topic, we're doing exactly what I wanted it to do. Give us a few weeks to work with the partnership and Jason to kind of fine-tune exactly what that is. And then, when we have our next discussion before the vote, we'll talk about this again on the 28th. We can either put it as a policy initiative, tier two, or you, as a body can, you know, we have consensus to keep it there as a key initiative, we will. But right now, again, it's just a topic of conversation that I wanted to have this morning.
Well, for this high-level view that we're talking about today, then, I'm pleased with the main key initiatives. I, you know, especially I want to make sure that support of mental health services is one of our number-one issues. We've got more than one number-one, but it needs to be one of the number-ones. And I'm, and so in general, I'm, I would look for tightening of the language and put it in the format we like, but in general, I appreciate the work that's been done on it as far. Appreciate the fact that this is a much smaller document than we've had the last few years so that, you know, we can carry it, we can explain it, and our lobbyist can, doesn't have to carry a small book around with him to explain what our positions are. So as, with that general statement, I mean, we need to hear what the other commissioners have to say.
Just a couple of things. Under item two, number two, you've got three different options, it looks to me like. Don't we need to say which one of those options that we need to go for?
Yes.
I think probably number two out of those three would be the one that I would support. I don't know what the rest of them are thinking about. But I think we need to tell you which one of those three that we would support. If we go beyond that to the secondary initiatives, I do like the treasurer's recommendation to cancel taxes when the amount due is less than $10 or so. I think it costs us more to go after those little small amounts of money than we're ever going to recoup from trying to go after it by the time we mail out the notice, possibly more than one, and then mail receipts back and so forth. I think it's kind of ridiculous. I've got a case myself, I own a little bit of mineral rights out in western Kansas, and they send me a $3.5 bill every year, $3.5. By the time that they pay the personnel cost to put that together, put it in the mail, I always ask for a receipt because I think it's ridiculous, so they pay to mail two things to me. It's stupid, so. I know it's a secondary issue, but I think it's an important one, because I think it would actually save the county's money by dropping anything that's less than $10. Those are a couple of them. I'm willing to listen to what other commissioners have to say. As far as economic development, I do believe that that needs fleshed out a little bit more so that we know exactly what we're saying.
Good. Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes.
Working with Will, I would like to have some guidance from the commissioners to get a consensus as to how you want to approach the election commissioner issue. As the commissioner pointed out, we've got several options. We don't have to talk all over and over again at our office, but you're the scientist, and so if you've got something that you want, if you want to pick the way you want to approach this. I can tell you, the larger counties have a right to input to the association of counties, and they're kind of all over the board right now. So we'll probably develop a consensus on it. But if you've got a position you want us to take, we'll be very happy to put that in there and take out the other ones.
What the other counties are doing? If they're listening.
Right now, they're only providing behind-the-scenes counsel to the association of counties. I don't think they have officially endorsed particular bills. The guts of it is always going to be that they want more control over the budgets because of the AG opinion that came down. They're going to want to control over the budget. Some of them want to go farther and just control who the election commissioner is, others don't give any work of that.
There also may be an opportunity at next week's KAC conference to talk to those counties. It may even be a topic of conversation at the conference, but certainly we can socialize with those counties directly and see what their position is.
How many counties, the four counties that have this? And that would be us and Johnson and Wyandotte and Shawnee.
Chairman, just noticing here that the top part of number two here says, change the budget process and/or the selection. And that number one below that is about the budget authority, number two is about the selection. So you could do one and/or two, either one of those or both of them, or you could leave everything as is. That's what this is trying to say. So I think our choice is, do we want to talk about budget and change the way budget is done, or selection process, or both, or none of the above? That's really what we have to decide here.
Option two, it has both of those. It selects the commissioner and brings the budget under control. Budget and personnel policy is under control.
We didn't want to presume in our office what you wanted to do, so we're willing to. If there's a consensus in development, we're happy to put that in here and have your vote on out of the 29th. And I assume on the post-election audit bill, it would be the same language that we had in the bill last year, but didn't make it all the way through, it made it through one half. So if you're supportive of the audit, Commissioner Howell had mentioned the audit on several occasions in the past, so. So if you want us to just go the same language as before, we can do that.
On the post-election audit?
Right.
The other, it seems that there's, it appears there's support for option number two, which is...
Select and control budget?
I'm actually more interested in number one, the budget.
I like one.
Because that's what it comes down to. Because we like how it's not about her, but it's about the budget, in my opinion.
Okay.
I think just kind of Johnson County, what I'm hearing in Johnson County, their approach is going to be, they're not trying to change viewpoints, too. They just want to control the budget.
All right. Is that the consensus here, then?
I would support number one, but I'd like to recuse myself a little bit because I don't feel like I should be making a decision on this because there's things that are related to the state budget decision. Election commissioner, I don't think, please ignore my opinion on this one.
I do think the manager's right, next week at KAC, talk to the commissioners from the other three counties.
We can discuss that. Mr. Howell and our up there, and the manager up there, we can come back and let you know how they're feeling.
But I think the counselor's right. My friends in Johnson County said that's the pressure they're taking.
Okay. Okay. How many people, are you board KAC? Are you board KAC? Okay, so three commissioners will be up there, the managers. Okay. Well?
Couple things. On the secondary, this change, change the charge of debt of attorney fees, I just need some more information on that. And then I'd like to suggest we add another key initiative, and that'd be voter approval for all tax increases at the state level. We have it down here. As I said, we've had two of the largest tax increases in the history of this state, retroactive to everybody, pummeled everybody that works, and now they're thinking about a third. So give the people a voice at the state level. You know, I think we had some discussion back when they passed the state of the tax lid on local communities that we thought they were kind of hypocritical, they don't have it on their own. I think they should. People can decide the overall tax burden. I think they need to have that. I'd like to add that on there as a key initiative.
It would seem consistent.
It would.
However, I mean, and we can put them on there, but does that just, I mean, they're not going to pass that, so does that just make them mad at us?
I don't care. I don't work for them, I work for my constituents. And I think my constituents would appreciate the fact that I'm fighting to keep their taxes down from a third tax increase over a period, a short period of time.
Richard, you're right, but that ain't going to pass, and we do want to get passed support for mental health services and urban area designation. And so I don't know if we want to put something on there that may have the potential to cause them to say, those crazy guys in Sedgwick County, they're wanting to tell us how to run our business.
No, I just want them to be consistent, because even some of them had the same criticism. So now it's time to step up and...
I get your point. I'm just trying to get what I want.
Besides, they don't take things personal up there, they'll be okay.
They what?
Besides, they don't take things personal up there, they won't get upset.
Okay. Let me write that down here.
I just think it's the right thing to do.
All right.
Commissioner, to answer your first question, currently on personal property tax collections, we can employ an attorney, you know, and have them, you know, garnish people's wages and those kinds of things, but any payment of attorney fees has to come out of the actual, the principle of the tax. We can't tack on 15% for attorney fees or anything like that.
Yeah, I guess I'd like some numbers of amounts and cases, and just some general informations.
Any other comments on this preliminary document?
I would just say, you know, I hear some criticism about last year's platform. I would just say, you know, I hear some criticism about last year's platform, I guess what I see was good about that, we had the key initiatives on our postcard we could hand out, and they were, we didn't give everybody the big document. We gave people the key initiatives on our postcard, there was four of them, and that's what we carried around, that's what was talked about. We didn't talk about the whole booklet, but we did define, you know, position statements for our lobbyists, so they would know where we would be on things as they came up, they would know it's a predetermined position, that they know what we would like to see them do when bills go out. So I'm not against the bigger document, I think it's not bad to define our position on things. But the postcard, I think, was very, very good. We did the postcard, and they only put the key initiatives on the postcard, I handed that out to the legislators at the January meeting, we did that, and I don't think that's a bad way to go forward. I think to have a deep document that's for our lobbyists and for people who may be writing legislation, it'd be good for them to know those things are out there, but I can tell you from, I'm sure Senator Michael O'Donnell here will probably say the same thing, nobody reads the longer document. They'll read four bullet statements, but the longer document, the state plan, it'll never get read. So you can hand those out all day long, it's a waste of time, but a postcard is going to get read. And, but I don't think it's wrong to define those other position statements and have them, I think Jason will read it, Scott will read it, so I'm not against having a longer document, that's fine.
I think doing the postcard's a great idea as well, you know, once we define what we're going to put on it.
And if you look at the document we did last year, it was not just statements of Commissioners, there were statements from the Sheriff on there, and the DA, and, you know, the County Treasurer, they all had statements on there that was important to their offices. And so, you know, that document was, a lot of, there was a lot of work put into that, those statements are mostly still true, almost nothing's changed on the back end, some of it has, but most of it still is relevant. And I think it would not be wrong for us to review that longer document and say, these are still statements we agree with. And there's nothing wrong with putting them on a longer document for our lobbyists. That's all. Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah. Any other comment, Mr. Counselor, Mr. Manager? At this point, have you think you've got what you needed out of us?
I'm assuming that you're all supportive of the language from a year ago regarding the election audits. That bullet didn't pass, but we're probably supportive. So, and I think the document, you'll have a 29th, we'll probably reflect that we are supporting that language. And then, we'll probably, after the meeting of the Counties Association, we'll probably have more of a consensus from you all as to how you want to approach the election commissioner issue. And I don't think there's any dispute about the urban area designation. Is there anybody objecting to anything regarding the mental health services component of this? I think we're asking guidance, the Managerial Office will have to talk with you all between now and 29th regarding the key document.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Commissioners, anything you'd bring up in addition to this little overview? No, it's dead on. I thought you were just getting one up. Maybe you might be right. Leave it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how about the rest of the staff? Okay, our elected folks?
Need to call a bug man. Call a bug man, he's my life.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Tanya Kelly?
I may add that to this list, less than this.
Okay. Well, if you're going to put something on it, you let us know also, all right? Okay. Anything else? All right, well then, no need sitting here, we've got stuff to do. We're here.